Calling the Riverside Township Board of Trustees meeting to order, please rise. And Clerk Reyes, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark.
Present.
Trustee Hylandbach.
Present.
Trustee Carroll.
Present.
Trustee DeCosta.
Present.
Clerk Reyes here. Supervisor Wilt?
Present. Thank you. We have a quorum. Just for your information, Mr. Hayes may be running a little late because he has another meeting before ours. So, the first item would be the approval of the minutes of the August 13th board meeting. What is your pleasure?
I make the motion to approve the meeting minutes held on August 13, 2024.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by trustee DeCosta, seconded by trustee Carroll, to approve the minutes of August 13, 2024. Are there any additions, corrections?
Yes. On page six, on the second paragraph, the last line, it says, seems to have lost sign, and I think that might, should be sighted.
I'm sorry, once again?
Yeah, I didn't catch anything. I'm sorry.
Page six?
Yes.
Second paragraph?
Oh, okay.
Last line of the second paragraph?
Oh, okay. Yeah. Lost sight. And last, last line. No, see, page six, it's under trustee reports. Here we go. Just before trustee reports, under the assessors' report, lost sight.
Oh, got it.
Rather than sign. Any other additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor of accepting the minutes with that correction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
Supervisor?
Yes.
I abstain. I was not present.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Please note that there's one abstention. All right. Next item is communications. Are there any communications?
There were no communications.
All right. Nobody wants to hear from us or talk to us. Supervisors' report, briefly. It's been a very busy month, especially in the realm of assistance. Since our last meeting, I've had multiple inquiries resulting in two emergency assistance and three new general assistance clients, and one GA application is currently pending. Additionally, some packets are either out or waiting to be picked up by candidates. I'm finding that the state and the county agencies are starting to refer people to townships more often, and I even get a few calls that, that I have to refer, that, which were referred that way, that I have to send on to the right township. But the food pantry has been busy as well. I had to run some numbers because one of the groups which supports us asked how many clients we serve and some other information about our pantry. We have eighty-two distinct households who have visited our pantry at least once in 2024, and sixty-one of those have come into, in, during the months when we've been offering farmer's market vouchers, so, since June. Nearly half of the voucher recipients have used at least some of the vouchers. There is roughly one more month for people to use the vouchers, so I'm sure there'll be much more usage by the end. Stocking the pantry, filling the bags, issuing vouchers, and redeeming them, and maintaining order in the pantry do keep us busy. I forgot to place it on the agenda because it was an informal inquiry, but the Riverside Chamber has asked if we would open the town hall and pay for the, yeah, the magician who performs between school singing programs during the holiday stroll. I've encouraged them to break up the choruses into three choruses instead of just two because the auditorium becomes dangerously crowded during the school portion. The budget allowed for the hiring of the magician, and the cost is within my spending authority. So as long as none of you object to that expenditure, I will let the chamber know that they can count on us. It's nice that they asked us in September rather than the last minute, so I think their new leadership is on top of things for the event. I would like to get some bids to repair the plaster in the southern sections of the east wall of the auditorium near, near to the stage, because I believe the diversion of a downspout has stopped the moisture invasion we had experienced previously. There doesn't seem to be new moisture, so please let me know if you have any good plaster painter contractors that you would recommend, especially who would deal with an old building. After that, I believe if we want to keep renting, the bathrooms should be our next project. I will need someone to come and open the building for the Riverside Community Caucus on October 6 at 1:00 PM, as I will be out of town, so please let me know if you would be available, if one of you would be available to do that.
What day is that?
That's a Sunday.
Sunday.
At what time?
Sunday, October 6 at 1:00 PM.
I'm not available.
If you can't, then I will have one of the staff do so, but if I can do it without paying extra for somebody to come in on Sunday.
Can I let you know?
Sure. Or you, John? John's volunteering?
John's gonna do it.
All right. It would just be a matter of, we'll let you know. I think they're using the auditorium.
They are.
And, and so that it would be the auditorium doors and the bathrooms and turn on the lights. So I'll, we'll give you some instructions, but if you will do that, that would be wonderful.
Are we charging them for that?
All we've asked is a deposit, a security deposit, just in case, because, just because. All right. Thank you. That's all I have, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
I do have one question, please supervisor. I believe you mentioned at the beginning of your comments, is it the state government agencies that are referring to the townships? State government agencies?
Yeah, so when people are applying for other benefits?
Yeah.
I get calls from people, you know, and, and unfortunately, though, I think those agencies aren't terribly specific, so I get commonly calls for Riverdale.
Okay.
But I also, most recently, I've gotten some that were like, belonged in Lyons Township or Berwin.
Okay.
You know. I don't think that they're quite as conscious of the borders of the townships.
Thank you.
But yes, I have been getting those referrals.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, then the assessor is not present tonight, and the item that she has sent us belongs on one of the other agenda items, so we'll skip that. Trustees' reports. Trustee DeCosta, do you have anything for us?
Thank you supervisor. No report tonight.
Thank you. Trustee Carroll?
Nothing today, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Clark?
Let's see. I attended a TOI educational seminar in Rock Island in August, and the majority of that was regarding, education part was regarding if you have a caucus or not. For that, I attended a TOI director's meeting in Springfield, and, you know, it's a big push now to get everybody registered for the TOI conference, and the exercise class is doing well.
Okay. Thank you very much. And trustee Hylandbach?
Good evening, everybody. The mental health board will resume their meetings next Wednesday, the 18th, at seven o'clock. We are going to be looking for a new member on the board as we did have someone who has resigned from the board, so we will be looking. If you know of anybody, please make sure they send their resume to supervisor Wilt.
Thank you very much.
I do have a question about that also.
Yes.
Township resident?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there an area of the township?
This one is from Riverside, so I mean...
Riverside, North Riverside, we have a pretty balanced board now, so one way or the other, if we can find somebody qualified, we'll take them on, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. And we can look through some of the resumes that we had gotten for the vacancies as well. All right. Then we will move on to new business, and we have a guest with us this evening, Monica Malewski of Selden Fox. If you could step to the podium and identify yourself for the, for the TV, and then you had in your materials, you had the audit report, and I know it's overwhelming, if you could perhaps summarize a bit for them and give us something from the auditors.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Monica. Thank you for having me here tonight. Thank you also supervisor Wilt and the rest of her team for their assistance they provided us during the audit. Your annual financial report begins with our independent auditor's report, which is an unmodified opinion, the highest form of assurance that we can provide that the financial statements and related notes are fairly stated. The audit report includes two sets of financial statements. The first are the government-wide financial statements on pages 10 through 12. These statements have a long-term perspective and include capital assets and long-term liabilities, including bonds payable and a net pension liability. Capital assets additions totaled $433,833 related to improvements to the bridge and depreciation of $48,149. Bonds payable totaling $450,000 are reported as both a current liability, $60,000, and a long-term liability, $390,000. The net pension liability was $85,257 at March 31, 2024 compared to $132,647 at March 31, 2023. The total IMRF pension liability is funded at 93 percent. The township reported a positive change in net position of $213,695 in the statement of activities. The fund financial statements beginning on page 13 have a more current perspective and are how, and are how the books are kept throughout the year. Cash and investments were $1,201,800 at March 31, 2024, representing an increase of $330,113 from March 31, 2023. Revenues consisting mainly of property taxes totaled $1,622,921 compared to $1,513,512 in fiscal year 2022. Property taxes increased by $110,232. Replacement taxes decreased by $28,366, and interest income increased by $28,918. Expenditures increased $361,856 from $1,644,110 in fiscal year 2023 to $2,5,966, with most of an increase in general town fund, road and bridge division, as cost of improvements to bridge expensed here. The expenses in the general assistance fund also increased from $71,912 to $106,807 due to an increased need in the township. The general fund, after taking into consideration bond proceeds of $450,000, reported as an other financing source, similar to revenue, had a positive bottom line of $120,434, and the ending fund balance at March 31, 2024 is approximately 50 percent of annual expenses. The general assistance fund reported a negative bottom line of $52,815, but ending fund balance is still more than three times annual expenses. The community mental health fund reported a small negative bottom line in the current year. Revenues were short of budget in the general town fund as budgeted. Other income was not received. Expenses came in well under budget in all three funds. Overall, results in all three funds compared favorably to budget. A few quick comments to conclude with. Management was well-prepared when we came out to do our audit procedures, which allowed us to complete our field work in an efficient manner. During our audit, we made five adjustments to record certain out-of-period receipts and disbursements that require recognition at March 31, 2024, and to properly record the bond transaction. The net effect was an increased bottom line by $65,818.30. We also made some adjustments to the fund financial statements for the treatment of long-term assets and long-term liabilities in order to prepare the government-wide financial statements. These adjustments come from the information provided by management. Thank you.
Questions?
Is there any area of concern that you saw, or something that we should, you know, take note of?
I did not see any areas of concern, no.
It's a testament to supervisor Wilt and her staff. I mean, really, this is a huge undertaking, being in the business. I know how difficult sometimes these can be. I read the report. It's, it's one of the best reports I think we've gotten. I mean, we have a few minor things that had to happen, but supervisor Wilt and the staff have done a terrific job, and they should be commended for it, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. By the way, I had met with Ed Tracy earlier. He just wasn't available this evening.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have the, the report. It has already been filed with the Comptroller's Office. It will be filed with the, with the county shortly, and if, I think per forma, we should have a motion to accept the audit report with, with the additional in-person report we had this evening.
I move that we accept the annual township audit, and the in-person report that we had tonight.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Hylandbach, to accept the audit report and the oral report that came with it. Any discussion? Hearing none, then please call the roll on this.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Hylandbach?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes. Motion is carried. Thank you very much. All right. Moving right along. I just lost my agenda. There it is. Okay. The next item of business is the elected official compensation for the next term. By the way, lest anybody panic that we have to make this decision quickly, we do have technically until November, but because our meeting is so late in November, I wouldn't want to leave it till then. But if we still have some discussion and want to, want to defer this, we do still have next month's meeting. However, I had indicated to, to you that in terms of the supervisors and the clerk salary, I don't know that we need to increase, but it's open for discussion, as, as well as the trustees. There is some discussion to be had about the assessors' salary. We did do a respectable increase for the supervisor the last term. I understand we are, we pay pretty well as compared to other townships our size, but that, I would say, is because our supervisor does do the general and emergency assistance personally. A comparable township is always River Forest. They're very similar to us in size, but they outsource their general and emergency assistance to Oak Park. So I mean, they pay it, but Oak Park does all of the work on it. So I don't know what, what your pleasure would be on this. If you want to take this a position at a time, we, that might be the, the best way to look at this. Also, it is possible for us to stagger the, the salary, and if you think some increases needed, you know, you could make each year a different amount. Couple of comments before we get to the specific salaries. I, I think I communicated to all of you, I'm not sure that the supervisor and the clerk really need a travel allowance. It's not really an allowance because we pay it out regularly. It's not that they, they have to submit for it. So our jobs don't involve that much travel. I mean, it's a small township, and, you know, I do, I do travel when I go to pick up the food, but it's not necessarily me who would do it. I just happen to have the vehicle, so I do it. But the assessor certainly does more traveling. They actually go about the township to inspect properties, make sure that everything's being assessed to what's actually standing on the property and so forth, and then there's a number of trips downtown. So my recommendation would be that we not include that. There is a small stipend that we put in for the supervisor because the supervisor here acts also as the roads commissioner, and by law, that has to be no less than, than $100 a year. So that's broken up. We've done it, I think, in order to make it easy to pay because it's included in the salary, and otherwise, you know, I have, I have no other additions or recommendations there.
Is this discussion in closed session?
I inquired of that, and it probably, although normally employees would be, since this is really for elected officials, and we don't know who that will be.
Right.
It probably shouldn't be. It doesn't really qualify as an exception to the closed session. It, you know, things that allow a closed session. Now, if you want to defer this and have a committee of the whole meeting to discuss, we could do that in October yet, and then make a decision in October.
I think that's a, a good idea, that we defer this until we can have a committee of the whole meeting.
Okay.
And then we can hammer this out. I mean, I don't see it taking too long.
Okay.
I mean, your recommendations are pretty sound on these salaries.
Correct.
So, I mean, but there is a few that we have to...
That you'd like to discuss, and yes, and the, and the communication from the assessor about that position probably should be discussed more thoroughly, and that was just distributed today. So I, I would not have a problem with, with that. I didn't want to try to call a committee of the whole in September because it was the day after Labor Day, and it just seemed like a crazy time to try to do that.
It's perfectly fine. I agree with trustee Hylandbach.
I'm sorry?
Oh, that would be October 1 at 6:30?
I believe so.
It's the first Tuesday in October.
Yes. So if, if somebody would like to move that we defer this item for discussion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we defer this to a committee of the whole meeting on October 1.
Okay. Do I hear a second? I have a motion from trustee Hylandbach, seconded by trustee Carroll, to defer this discussion to the committee of the whole to be held on October 1. That's the first Tuesday, and those meetings are scheduled for 6:30. Okay?
Ma'am, did you have a comment? I think we were talking over each other.
No, I, I just agree with trustee Hylandbach that we should be going to a committee of the whole on this.
Okay. Then we have a motion on the floor, so I would call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion is carried. All right. Onward. The next item is the Township Health Insurance Renewal. We have very limited options because we're such a small group, and they're really shopping it around. Our agent has, has looked around. There's really nothing other than this. You can see at the bottom of the page with the stripes that what we're currently paying, what the renewal of the same plan would be, and if we were to change plans, and you, that appears right under that right-hand column, our employees would have much more to pay out of pocket. There, where right now, they, whether, if they're in-network, there's no deductibles. That would increase greatly. There are out-of-pocket doubles on what they would have to pay, and I think that the increase is small enough
Yeah.
per month for us to simply renew the same plan that we have, and that would be my recommendation.
It's a $200 increase. I mean, that's unheard...
Well, it's a month. That, that is the monthly payment.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's, that's not...
Still, a $200 increase. I mean, that, that's really nothing, especially in insurance. I know my deductibles have gone up substantially in the last couple of years, so I would think that I would agree with supervisor Wilt on this, that we renew that policy.
What's the difference between deductible and out-of-pocket? Annual deductible and annual out-of-pocket? I thought those were synonymous.
No, they're not. So there is, even with the deductible then, there's a limit to how much out-of-pocket you're supposed to pay, is my understanding. I'm not real good on health insurance jargon, but that is my understanding of it. One is, like, you may have a deductible per individual, but even if everybody has to pay the deductible, I think the out-of-pocket is the limit on it, on how much you actually pay. So if it's a bigger family or something, I believe that's how it works. Any other? I'm not sure what that'll do to the budget this time, but I think there's some extra money in the salaries in terms of the budget, so, you know, it shouldn't be that far out. I usually do try to anticipate an increase when I budget.
This takes effect on November 1, am I correct?
Correct.
All right, okay.
So it'd be November, December, January, February, March, five out of 12 months of the budget here.
All right. I make a motion that we go with the renewal of the current insurance for, for, from 11, November 1, 2024, to October 31, 2025.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Hylandbach, seconded by trustee DeCosta, that we remain in the same plan except the increase on the renewal for the plan year of November 1, 2024, to, to October 31, 2025. Any more discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor, well, no, this is an expenditure, so please call the roll.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Hylandbach?
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes. All right. We are down to special event requests. Number one, you can scratch. The, the request was withdrawn. So we only have the Olmsted Society Annual Meeting request for January 17, 2025, and that is, they, they have dinner and everything with it. So there, you can see the application, and they are aware of needing the insurance and so forth. So what is your pleasure on this?
Do they serve any alcohol, supervisor Wilt?
Yeah, I think they might BYO, and that's why. Wait, let's see. No, I guess this one doesn't have insurance.
It says alcohol is going to be served.
Yes.
Oh, yes, it does. Yes, there it is. Yes. Therefore, they, they would provide the insurance.
Is this like an agriculture club, or not agriculture, architecture club?
No, it's, um, the parks and stuff like that.
I mean, I've seen them all over. I just don't know.
Right, yeah. No, it's, it's keeping the, the parks in the same concept as Olmsted wanted it with a lot of natural plants. Native plants.
The city planning and all that.
Yeah, native plants.
Native plants.
You know, they like a lot of native plants.
But it's not just about the plants. They also, don't they look out for the architecture and all that kind of thing, too?
Their preservation is... Yeah, I think they're, they're preservation of society.
Yeah.
No, I thought the architecture was, um, the, um,
Historical.
The, well, um, yeah, the, well, isn't there a whole commission on that or?
Well, yes, but I, I thought that, yeah, I mean, I know that the, they are all about preserving the, uh,
The principles of Frederick Olmsted.
Right. Okay. Thank you. I don't know if they do architect or not. So what is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion that we accept the Frederick Law, Frederick Law Olmsted Society's request for space for their annual public meeting, uh, with their insurance pending.
Okay. I have a motion to, uh, grant the request to the Olmsted Society. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Trustee DeCosta, seconded by Trustee Carol, to approve the request for the special use by the Frederick Law Olmsted Society for January 17th, 2025. Any discussion? And hearing none, um, we'll call the roll on that.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Trustee Carol.
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Motion is carried. Okay, then we have here, uh, request for advertising in the North Riverside Players' next production of The Wedding Singer. Uh, you, you'll note that if we are to do this, the deadline is tomorrow, so we would get that off to them right away. We haven't been asked to do this in a while. We did it in the past, so what is your pleasure?
Did we do it as a half or full page in the past, Supervisor?
Oh, boy.
That's okay.
It may have, I, yeah, it was so long ago that I don't know.
Been a long time.
I would go with a half page.
Yeah.
A half page, yeah.
A half page? I have a motion. Is that a motion for a half page?
Uh, it's a suggestion.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to make a motion for a half, a half page because it's a good idea.
Okay.
So you made the motion?
I am.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to, uh, grant a one-half page ad to the North Riverside Players' for their next production. And, uh, any discussion? Then, Book Regis, would you please call the roll?
Sure.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Trustee Carol.
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. So that we have approved a $60 one-half page ad in their book.
Sixty.
$60.
Yes.
Okay. Then next we have the Autumn Fest. Um, I have told them that we will participate. There's no money involved in this and we have at least one volunteer to make the chili. Trustee Highlandbach has offered to make the chili for this. So if any of you can help that day to be there, represent the township, um,
Make sure the performing play fair.
Right, right, right. Take away their, uh, their hot sauce and their, and their, uh, oyster crackers.
The playing field is what I'm saying.
No cheese allowed, all that good stuff.
I didn't think you could put anything.
You're not supposed to, but every now and then they have.
You didn't get that one.
The firemen sometimes have some stuff out there. So, so, uh, we tend to call out citizens rest, citizens rest.
Party foul, throwing flags.
Those, those people are your.
No.
Your people.
Not mine.
We're going to get, uh, Trustee Highlandbach's chili to win yet because it's always very popular. People are always saying it's the best and then they don't vote for it.
Well, we've won. We've won, uh, three times.
Well, that's great.
But wasn't that for not, always for the township organization? Didn't you guys do it for?
Oh, we did it, well, yeah, one time it was for, uh,
Another organization.
Another organization.
Another organization, yeah. But we won twice more with the township though.
Okay, well, good, good. Then, um,
Trustee Clark doesn't come to it, but then.
This doesn't really mean.
Not a subject for tonight.
Much action, but please note that this is a week from Friday already, so.
We're ready.
Yes.
I will be there.
Okay, thank you, um, and I can send you, I, this doesn't really say all of it. I will forward what I forwarded to Trustee Highlandbach, which says when they recommend you come to set up and so forth. Thank you very much.
So we're not voting now.
There's, I don't think there's anything to vote on there. Uh, there's no cost involved, so.
No cost involved, no.
It's just, I ask you.
Maybe we should vote to endorse, uh, Chef Highlandbach's, uh,
Oh, well, that's true.
I have expenses. I think it's costing me to make chili about, uh, well, forget about it.
Do we need palm cards so people vote for the point?
Fines for failure.
It'll stand on its own.
Uh, yes, it will. Alright, um, then on to the Lions Club Person of the Year Dinner. This is, um, the deadline for this is next week, but it's coming up in two weeks. And Janice Foley is the Director of the Library. And she's been such for quite a while.
Yeah, 30 years.
Pardon?
I think she's close to 30 years.
Wow.
Since been the Director and has done a wonderful job.
Yes.
Yes, she's served.
She's, she's up when we, uh, the library asks for a community partnership, she is joining, the one that's here asking for it.
I love that library.
So, um, if you would like me to see about purchasing tickets, how many of you would be interested in attending?
I would say, for me, it's a, it's a no.
Okay.
Other obligations.
Other obligations that day? Okay, I plan to attend and, and Trustee Clark, anybody else want us to purchase a ticket?
Yeah, I think I'd like to attend as well.
I'm in Springfield.
You'll be in Springfield? Okay, so that's one, two, three, four tickets?
I can drop off tickets.
Do you, okay, do you need, um, a spa, do you, either of you need a spouse ticket? Do?
No. I don't think so.
No? Okay, so four tickets. And you, and you have them, so, okay.
I have them. I can drop them off and I can reserve seats for us.
Okay, then we, we can cut a check for his thing tomorrow.
Okay.
Or.
Yeah, whenever.
Yeah, right.
You know, I just need it by next week or so.
Absolutely.
But I, I can drop off the tickets tomorrow.
Okay. Sorry. Okay, uh, we will take care of that. Alright, on to, uh, some just FYIs. Uh, we were approached by, um, our congressional representative to, oh, our state representative, I'm sorry. Oh, um, to participate.
Do we, do we need to vote on that?
Oh, yes, we should, yes. Can I have a motion for those tickets to the, um,
I make a motion that we buy four tickets to the Lions Club Person of the Year Dinner on September 25th, honoring Library Director Janice Foley.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee DeCosta to purchase four tickets in honor, uh, to honor Janice Foley as Person of the Year, uh, for September 25th. This, the event is run by the Lions Club and those four tickets at $65 each. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, then please call the roll.
Trustee Clark. Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta.
Yes.
Trustee Carol.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Motion is carried. Okay, so the, save the date, uh, this is simply for us to have an informational table about what we offer and I have agreed to, to do that for, so this is for Saturday, September 28th, um, from 10 to 2 at Commons Park in North Riverside, so you are welcome to join. Um, I will make sure that we are staffed there. Then we have a reminder about the Township Officials of Illinois Annual Educational Conference. Please let me know. We can submit the registration if you plan to attend, but I'd like to get that done as soon as possible because, let me see, what is the, when is it? Is it the end of September that we have to have the hotel reservations by? Something like that.
I thought by October 3rd.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yes, so please, uh, let, let us know. I would say if you can, by the end of this week, no later than the middle of next week so that we can get this, this done if you, if you plan to attend. And, uh, hearing, seeing nothing else on the agenda besides this, we will move on to the approval of warrants and I will invite Trustee Clark to do so.
I make a motion to, that the board authorize and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant September of 2024 in the amount of $16,344.19.
I have a motion to, uh, accept the general warrants. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee DeCosta to approve the, uh, general warrants for September 2024 in the amount of $16,344.19. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Trustee Carol.
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Motion is carried. Uh, next.
Uh, I make a motion that the board ratify and authorize payments of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. Utility warrant, $1,042.87. Payroll warrant, $20,000, dollar, $20,006.59. Health warrant, $3,168.55. Community partnerships in the amount of $17,504. General assistance warrant in the amount of $13,929.91. And the food pantry warrant in the amount of $1,634.76. All of the above, all of the above is presented to the board this 10th day of September 2024.
Thank you. Trouble, I'm looking back at this general warrant and I, I feel like it's short. Um, I don't think that this is a complete warrant because it starts September 1st and this should go from, uh, from August 14th. So I think that when this was run, we occasionally have a glitch. The, the other items that, the other items would have already been paid, so it would be an approval. But we've been having some trouble with, uh, QuickBooks and it doesn't always run how it's.
On the, our sheet, it says $16,344.19.
Yes, I agree, but if, you'll note, yeah, $16,344.19.
It's two weeks worth of nothing.
But that's, yeah, I, it, it seemed like a very short warrant and I'm sorry, I was out of the office to, uh, to double check it.
I mean, we, it's been paid. We can amend that at the next meeting, am I correct?
Yes, yes. I'm, I'm troubled by that.
Or we can amend it at the committee of the whole meeting, I believe. I think.
Uh, I don't know if we can do that.
We can ask Mike about that.
Alright, who unfortunately must be tied up in his other meeting. I'm looking, the other warrants all seem to go back to August. It's just that one general warrant sheet. And we had trouble, last month's was, was off as well. Yeah, the others go back where they should, so.
They do go back.
Um, I will say, these are, these are items that have not been paid yet, so if you approve these, that's great. The others have been paid. We just need to approve them in a, in a future meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, because that, that's a problem. Alright, so, do I, I don't have a motion yet, do I?
I made the motion.
Yeah.
For, for the rest of the warrants? Okay, so I need a second for the other warrants besides the general warrant.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee Highlandbach to approve the following warrants in the amount, following amounts for September 2024. Utility warrant, $1,042.87. Payroll warrant, $20,006.59. Health warrant, $3,168.55. Community partnership warrant, $17,504. General assistance warrant, And the food pantry warrant, the amount of $1,000. Beat my magnifying glass. Uh, $6,034.76. I have a motion and a second for all those warrants. Would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Trustee Carol.
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Thank you. The motion is carried and we have no public here, so no public comments. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, re-adjourn.
Do I hear a second? I have a motion by Trustee DeCosta, seconded by Trustee Carol, to adjourn this meeting. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Motion is carried. Thank you.